We're live on YouTube and I think, yes, we just need to put this slide up.
Yeah, we're just bringing in the attendees. I'll put the slide up as well. Now, we're still just waiting on attendees to join.
Good morning.
Still waiting on applicants to join.
All right. Do we have the main applicants who are going to speak in the meeting?
We do not have the speaker in the attendee list just yet. So wait.
Edith, do we seem close to having most of them in now?
No, we're still waiting on the main presenters. Staff is contacting them.
Edith, it looks like we've got a couple more team members that just.
We do. I believe we have the primary team members now.
Okay. I will get started. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the January 12th, 2021 Public Hearing, Public Meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the role. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devinger. I see his camera is on, but he is not there. Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutti.
Here.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay, all set.
Good morning and welcome to the January 12th Public Hearing and Meeting. We will begin today with three public meeting items and then move to our public hearing agenda. This hearing and meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on YouTube. If you would like to watch the proceedings, please do so by going to our channel on YouTube. And if you would like to testify on any of the hearing items later, please join the Zoom meeting at the time indicated on our agenda, which can be found on our website. The Zoom information is also on the website and we will put it on the screen at the testimony portion of each item. We are starting this morning with a public meeting to continue the proceedings for the applications for 250 Water Street and the South Street Seaport Museum Building. Last Tuesday, we held a public hearing and heard the applicant's presentation, listened to public testimony, and we received written materials that were shared with all of the commissioners. Today, we will hear the applicant's response, ask questions, and then we will move to our discussion. I also want to note for the record that Commissioners Bland, Devinger, and Holford Smith are all recused and will not be present for this meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala, to read the items into the record.
Thanks, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We're going to start today's public meeting agenda by reading in items one and two, which will be presented together. LPC 21-04480. This is an application for a binding report from Manhattan Block 74 Lot 1, 89 South Street, AKA 175 John Street in the South Street Seaport Historic District, currently an empty lot. The application is to construct a new building. Also, item two, LPC 21-03235, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 98 Lot 1, 250 Water Street, also in the South Street Seaport Historic District, also a parking lot, and this application is to construct a new building. Again, no action was taken last Tuesday, and we'll begin after we open the proceedings.
All right. Commissioner Chapin, will you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Motion to open.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lutti, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. We'll vote on that now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the proceedings are open and the applicants may speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to start. I am Valerie Campbell. I'm a partner at Kramer Levin, and we're Landmarks Council to the Howard Hughes Corporation. I'm joined by other members of the team, including Saul Schurle and Adam Meister from Howard Hughes, Chris Cooper and Frank Mann from SOM, Elise Quasbarth and Lindsay Peters from Higgins Quasbarth, David Karnowski from Freed Frank, and Corey Relard from AHPA. Captain Jonathan Boweare is also here. We're all available to answer questions. We submitted a written memorandum in response to many of the issues raised in the public testimony. This morning, I will spend a few minutes discussing the commission's jurisdiction and standard of review, and Chris Cooper will then respond to testimony about the design. At the public hearing, some people questioned why the commission was reviewing this building given its review of prior applications on the site. We only know of four applications where the commission took a vote, and the last was in 1991. These decisions are not binding here because the commission must review every application on its own merits. This application is submitted by a new owner and architect. It differs from prior proposals in many respects, including massing materials details, and includes a robust presentation about the perception of the proposed building and its relationship to the historic district. Importantly, this proposal takes a holistic approach to the district that extends beyond the block itself, which is justified by the planning and preservation history of the South Seaport Historic District. In addition, it is not true that an approval here would establish a precedent that would compel the commission to approve similarly-sized buildings or towers in other districts. This is a unique site in terms of its size and location. We are not aware of any vacant sites in other districts that are comparable or other districts where a cultural institution played such a critical role in the district's preservation. The speculative prospect of future applications, which will present vastly different facts and circumstances, should not deter the commission from approving this application. During the public hearing, there were also claims that the commission could not consider a building that does not conform with current zoning, and claims that the commission could not approve a tall building in a historic district. First, the commission is not bound by the height established in the 2003 results. The Landmarks Law expressly prohibits the commission from applying zoning regulations when it makes its determinations of appropriateness. If the commission finds this building is appropriate, the owner will apply for the required zoning actions. This two-step review process is required under the Landmarks Law. The City Planning Commission and the City Council will then evaluate and decide the zoning and environmental issues raised by this proposal. Second, there is no appropriateness rule that prohibits taller buildings in historic districts. Historic districts are not frozen in time. New buildings are not required to mimic or match the scale, design, materials, or details of the historic buildings. There is nothing about the nature of this historic district that necessarily requires that all new construction be low-rise, particularly with respect to this vacant full block, which is at the western perimeter of the district away from the waterfront. The commission, in considering the relationship of this building to other improvements in the historic district, has latitude under the Landmarks Law to consider a variety of factors, including aesthetic, historical, and architectural values and significant architectural style, design, arrangement, texture, materials, and color. In short, we think that the two applications before the commission can be found appropriate under the Landmarks Law and will further the protection enhancement of this historic district. Thank you. I think Chris is going to go next.
Good morning. This is Chris Cooper from SOM, and I'm also joined by my colleague, Frank Mahan. We'll speak about 250 Water Street and the John Street Lot, respectively. Two applications for two interrelated sites, an important distinction of this proposal from all prior proposals, the 250 Water Street.
Good morning. I'm Frank Mahan. I'll speak very briefly here. We wanted to clarify and reiterate just a couple of points about the museum. It is occurring in two phases. The first phase has a couple of components. First, to put the museum on sound financial footing for the future moving forward. And second, to open its gallery spaces as soon as possible, which have not been open in any meaningful way since Superstorm Sandy. That includes the restoration of the buildings 91 South Street and the Fulton Ferry Hotel you see outlined in a dashed red line, as well as new construction, which we have highlighted in red, providing egress and accessibility via an elevator to all levels of the galleries, which it currently does not enjoy, as well as the mechanical and infrastructural work required to open the museum. That work enables Phase Two, which is the construction of the new building on the empty John Street Lot, and an approval of that design will be a critical component, as is often the case for institutions, for additional future fundraising for that part of the project. Next, please. So here we see all of those components together. In the foreground is the Fulton Ferry Hotel Building, 91 South Street, just south of that. The restoration of these elements, the reconfiguration of the interiors, the new entrance at the corner you see all is in the foreground and part of Phase One. Beyond is the new building on the John Street Lot, part of Phase Two. Next, it has a few distinctive components, chief among them perhaps the metal cladding, which we are proposing as copper, which is resonant with the historic practice of cladding wooden shitholes, and is also an appropriate material that we do find on the waterfront. We see the Battery Maritime Building, the Tin Building, other metal-clad buildings on the waterfront not far from this one. We also looked to historic arches located at the ground level of distinctive buildings within this district. Next, please. And we put these components together, together with other elements, to create a distinctive identity for the new building, but one that is harmonious with the district and derived from historical precedents within it.
Thanks, Frank. Focusing now on 250. There was much discussion in the public testimony regarding our evaluation of the site as an edge condition. We fully recognize that the site is clearly within the boundaries of the district, but the sheer size of this site and its surrounding buildings to the immediate north, south, and west offer a context for larger scale. The upland edge of the district is the back of the district, and its boundaries, while clear on a map, are difficult to perceive at street level. A new building will reclaim a clear district edge, and that upland edge will be primarily characterized by new construction. And to clarify, the transfer district is overlaid with the historic district, with several blocks within the district currently designated as receiving sites, as shaded in gray on this map.
Show me this.
As we noted, the scale and texture of the district existed historically within a backdrop of tall buildings, and this was perceived from within the district and from afar. That is very much still the condition today, a backdrop of tall buildings, and will be the condition with our proposal. Bulk is not the only determinant of scale. What's imperative here is design. Texture, materiality, color, and detailing will define the character of the streetscape. Several people testified to the appropriateness of limiting bulk to the zoning established in 2003. This envelope here represents the area available on the site and the bulk of that area. This is exactly what you get. A street wall rising to 85 feet, a 10-foot setback rising to 120 feet, and mechanicals capped at 160 feet. So we believe that our proposal can be more sensitive to the scale of the immediate streetscape, and we want to demonstrate that in a relationship to the as-of-right scenario. So most importantly, we aim to find an appropriate street wall height, scale, and texture relative to the surrounding context. So our proposal is a street wall, cornice line at 57 feet, that rises to 71 feet in the center of the block, a 10-foot setback with a rise to 85 feet, and a cap of the podium at 99 feet. That's a significant reduction to the as-of-right massing with an 85-foot street wall, a 10-foot setback, 120-foot cap on that, and mechanicals to 160 feet. And our proposed bulk at street level is comparable to the 1991 approved scheme. So all of these scenarios will have impact to the surrounding streets of the district. How we develop the street wall is critical to a successful solution. So we're going to demonstrate through a series of views the streetscape improvement of infilling the block and completing the district, and then we want to demonstrate the, what we believe is the improvement of our proposal of our design in relation to the as-of-right envelope, starting here on Water Street, looking north, seeing the overpass of the Brooklyn Bridge in the distance, the one-sided nature of the street with only brick facades on the east side and no enclosure of the street to the west. The benefit of the proposal is to recreate the streetscape, recreate the room of the street with an appropriately scaled and textured street wall, and that is far better than the 85-foot bulk of the existing as-of-right zoning. So we have a series of views where you can see here, for instance, in the immediate foreground, what it means to have a lower street wall relative to the underlying zoning. Another view on Beekman, looking out of the district, open corner, ill-defined intersection, with the benefit of infilling the site and doing that in a way with an appropriately scaled and textured podium, and that the height has really been brought down in the corners to relate very specifically to the context of the buildings in the foreground, and that relative to the as-of-right zoning envelope with a 10-foot setback. And you see also the benefit of here where our towers are set back 40 feet, so that they get out of the view on the streetscape. And then the difference of being in the streetscape, mid-block, on water, looking south, open edge, reclaiming the full room of the street, mid-block, and that cornice line is a reduced cornice line relative to the available street wall height at 85 feet. So there really is benefit and advantage to carving that street wall and altering the underlying zoning. And again, the view now on PEC Slip, where we see in the foreground the newly paved public space of PEC Slip, the opportunity here to redefine the boundaries of PEC Slip by infilling the full site, and doing that in a way that steps down significantly at the corner relative, again, to the existing as-of-right massing with an 85-foot street wall, 10-foot setback up to 120 feet, and mechanicals that cap out at 160. Really, there's a big difference in trying to also set the tower back 40 feet from the north side to pull that out of the line of vision. And a few more views, and then we will close our comments. But now the edge of the district, looking south on Pearl Street, it's hard to see the boundaries of the district. A new building defines the outer edge, the upland edge of the district, and that is very much in line and consistent with any construction on the site, including the as-of-right cap with the 85-foot street wall. On Pearl Street, we took advantage of the different scale of the district and did bring our street wall up to 85 feet. Here, moving a little bit south on Pearl Street and looking into the district on Beekman, there was also great commentary about blocking views of the Brooklyn Bridge. And here you can see it's true that the Brooklyn Bridge Pier is visible from Pearl Street, but any building above two stories will block that view. So it is not our proposal relative to another proposal. It is just constructing the site that will have, that will change the visibility beyond the district, but will show an edge to this district. And so here is our proposal relative to the building immediately south of us, the old Beekman Hospital addition here, and that relative to the existing zoning envelope with a 10-foot setback on the south face versus the 40-foot setback that we have introduced for the tower. And then also from Fulton Street, looking north on Pearl Street, there's not visibility from this position of the Brooklyn Bridge, but you see essentially, again, the ill-defined edge of the district, and you look essentially at PEC Slip School. And so we infill the site, reestablish the edge of the district, and that is very comparable to even an as-of-right scenario in terms of bulk as perceived at street level. So we're not altering the bulk at street level, only working to try to improve that with the design and development. And we really hope to be having that conversation with you about appropriateness of the street wall and how to achieve the best design, scale, and texture, materiality for that street wall. So we're really close just with this image, which is a nice comparison of seeing the existing, or excuse me, the historic condition on the left. So this is a view taken, it's the same view in all three photos, on Water Street, looking south. We see the historic scale and texture of the historic fabric on the left. That is missing today. It's a gap in the district, and we have opportunity on the right to reclaim that frontage, reclaim that scale and texture with historic, the historic condition of a backdrop of tall buildings as it was before, as it is today, and as that will continue to be with our proposal. And that concludes our comments, and we are eager to respond to any questions and clarifications that we can offer.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, now is the time for questions, and we will, I think we should try to ask as many questions as we need to, to really solidify our thoughts here, and then we will move to our discussion. So if you have any questions, please raise your hand so I can see you. So if you have any questions, please raise your hand so I can see you. Okay, I am not seeing any questions. I think that, you know, we had a very thorough presentation last week, and this presentation, I think, answered a lot of questions that may have come up after testimony. And, um, you know, the commission's been reviewing materials as well. So I think, um, if we don't have any questions, then we will just go ahead and move to our discussion. And, um, I am starting to unmute or request to unmute those of you who are present for this meeting.
I'm sorry, Sarah, do you want to note any written comments that we've received or?
Yes, please, Rich. Any additional comments? Of course, you know, for public meeting items, we do allow for additional written comments. And as I noted, we did receive some, um, last week, and, and all comments have been shared with the commissioners. But go ahead and note it for the record.
Sure. We received a letter in opposition from Congressman Jerry Nadler, seventeen other additional letters in opposition, and one letter in support since last week's hearing.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay. So before we begin our comments, I want to remind commissioners of the scope of our review and make a few observations to help guide the discussion and organize thoughts. First, I want to just remind everyone that we have two proposals before us, the new museum building and the building for 250 Water Street. So everyone should comment on both buildings. Second, I want to point out factors that we should not consider. So the applicant noted as part of its presentation that the project includes affordable housing and the South Street Seaport Museum, which has been a fierce advocate of preservation of the seaport since before the nineteen seventy-seven designation of the district, as well as owning and operating many of the buildings and tall ships in the district, may benefit from an approval. So I'm not going to describe these benefits any further because, like the affordable housing, these considerations, while laudable, are not factors that we can consider or rely on in determining whether the proposed designs for the 250 Water Street site and the John Street site are appropriate. So notwithstanding that there was much testimony on these aspects of the proposal, I want to remind you that you should not include them in your considerations. Third, I want to outline the factors that we can consider. The Landmark's Law sets forth the framework and factors that can be considered when reviewing proposed work in a historic district. In its most general sense, we must consider whether the proposed work would be appropriate for and consistent with the effectuation of the purposes of the law. So to paraphrase those purposes with specific reference to districts, they are A, to protect, enhance, and perpetuate districts which represent or reflect elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history; B, they are to safeguard the city's historic, historic aesthetic and cultural heritage as embodied and reflected in such districts; C, to stabilize and improve property values in such districts; D, to foster civic pride in the beauty and noble accomplishments of the past; E, to protect and enhance the city's attractions to tourists and visitors and the support and stimulus to business and industry thereby invited; F, to strengthen the economy of the city; and G, to promote the use of historic districts for education, pleasure, and welfare of the people of the city. So in making this determination with respect to a proposal to build on a vacant lot in a historic district, the law specifies that the commission shall consider the relationship between that work and the exterior architectural features of other neighboring improvements in such district. And in appraising this relationship, the commission shall consider, in addition to other pertinent matters, the factors of aesthetic, historical, and architectural values and significance, architectural style, design, arrangement, texture, material, and color. So as, as we begin our discussion, um, the other thing that you should consider are the prior decisions by the commission. And as we often note, each application is unique to its context, design, and rationale. And you can consider whether such decisions should be followed or whether they shouldn't be, and if not, you can explain why not. So just because the commissioners denied a proposal for a building of certain massing, that doesn't mean that no building with a similar massing can ever be found appropriate for the site. It may be that a different design, along with a different rationale, does make a case for appropriateness in a way that the previous proposal did not. And I also want to clarify the past actions. I know the applicants did this as well. But there was much testimony about nine prior decisions by the commission on applications, and this is incorrect. There have been four decisions, three denials and one approval. The other applications were withdrawn without the commission making a decision. And these four decisions occurred roughly between thirty and thirty-eight years ago. There were three denials in the nineteen eighties, one for a, a single large building, one for a tall tower on a base, and one for two towers of an equal size on a base. And, um, and as noted, the nineteen ninety-one commission approval was for a ten-story building with a setback eleven-story. And the rezoning of the seaport in the early two thousands would allow that massing to be constructed. And so, um, you may consider how this compares to the previous proposals. The commission approved a building with a significant street wall, and the applicant has given you a comparison of the current zoning envelope, which could be built under the zoning and their, and their proposed building. And so it's perfectly appropriate for you to compare the impact of that massing and with the proposed massing on the neighboring buildings in the district. You may also consider the uniqueness of this vacant lot. There isn't any other lot as large as this in any historic district. In fact, this lot is twice as large as the next largest lot. So to be accurate, this isn't just a lot, but it's an entire city block. And any new building, even a four- or five-story building, or the ten-story building that was approved, would result in a significant amount of new construction. And so in thinking about this, you may consider the restoration of the street wall, the views, which would be blocked, as the applicant said, by even the approved ten-story building or even a lower building. You may also consider the specific history of this block and this historic district. The applicant noted that the specific history of the preservation of this area involves tall towers adjacent to smaller buildings. This was shown in the early urban renewal plan, the Seaport Museum's master planning, and the innovative air rights transfer mechanism. Is it relevant that the commission included receiving Site One, a landing site for transfer of air rights, which are the three most northern blocks in the district shown today? Is it appropriate for that history to be manifested in the design of a new building within a historic district on a block that has no historic fabric and has been largely empty since the nineteen seventies? And I think there is something to this argument. It doesn't mean that we are looking outside of the district for appropriate scale and design, but rather reflecting on the history of the actual preservation of this district in the design. And as you know, you should consider how the building fits into the district in terms of its height and massing. And we've talked a lot about the street wall. In, in this case, the towers are set back on a street wall base, and it's at the edge of the district. And as the applicant's pointed out, they have thought about the design and materiality. And so how does that design and material, those design, that design and those materials reflect, um, the overall height and massing and relationship to the district? And finally, I just want to say that appropriateness is a continuum. There is no one right answer, but many possible answers. And we often discuss the fact that there is always a myriad of different possible appropriate responses to a historic context involving massing, architectural style, materials. The law doesn't imply that there is only one answer. It recognizes that many factors work together to create an appropriate proposal. So while I'm sure we would all agree that a proposal for a four-story building would be appropriate depending on other factors such as design and materials, what about something bigger? The commission has approved an eleven-story building, a ten-story plus a one-story setback. The applicant has shown you a comparison of the relationship of the, the zoning that would allow that building and the buildings in the district. Could it be higher still? What factors would make that possible? So as you give your comments today, it's especially important for you to be as articulate and detailed as possible in explaining your analysis of the proposal. This will benefit not only your fellow commissioners, but the applicant and the public as well. So I think much to think about, and, um, and I think if we can start, start to articulate our thoughts on, on many of these questions, that will help us to really have a robust discussion today. So with that, I'm going to turn, um, to my fellow commissioners for discussion, and I'm going to actually turn to my imaginary right and start with Commissioner Luttrell. Would you begin the discussion?
Wow, that's a tall order. Um, okay, I'm, um, first of all, uh, thank, uh, thank the applicants for their work last week or their response this week, and thank you, Sarah, for, you know, the explanation and the setup that you just provided to us. I mean, I, uh, Mark mentioned this also at the last meeting, and I think it is really important to note that in looking at what should be here or can be here, we, we definitely should not be looking outside of the district. I think we, we, I agree that we need to look at the context within the district. And I also agree that, um, this isn't an either-or situation here. And it doesn't mean that there can't be height here. The question is how much and how is it configured? And, um, I, I do want to just make some references to, to where we are in the world today. Because, and I do want to speak a little bit about the surrounding area because I think it's important. You know, what's going on in Lower Manhattan right now is completely different than what was going on in Lower Manhattan from an, um, I'm going to use economic development standpoint because that is something for us to be thinking about as we look at this project. There's been a lot of growth and development, both on the commercial side and, and definitely on the residential side. And I was, uh, you know, I used to work at the Economic Development Corporation. I spent ten years there and worked on a lot of projects that played a role in fostering that growth, and the South Street Seaport, by the way, was one of them. But a significant amount of that growth has happened sort of on the edges, on the west side, further, uh, down toward the tip of Lower Manhattan, especially with the residential. And I think the question is for us to think about, as we consider the entire project, or one of the questions is, how, what kind of role could this development project play in the continued evolution and economic development of the area? And how much of a push should it be giving, giving to the area given the, um, context that's in it? I do want to note that, um, the surrounding, Pearl Street, you know, may have been widened, and it may have contributed to, um, further, uh, demarcating the, the, um, the start and the, um, and end of the, of the district and the entry into, uh, the commercial, uh, part of Lower Manhattan. But you do feel a real difference when you cross Pearl Street. There is no question. I worked on Williams Street for years, and I recall, you know, and I, and I, so I took, I was constantly, not only in that part of Lower Manhattan, but walking all around, and I recall, you know, the dark canyon aspect of Lower Manhattan, which still exists today because those buildings haven't gone away, and wherever there's been space, more have been built. And when you cross Pearl Street, you have a completely, and you walk into the district, you have a completely different sensation. It's almost like the weight of the world is being taken off of your shoulders, and you have a sense, like you sort of meld within to the lower-scale buildings. You connect to the water. And it's, um, I think something that, as we look at this building, at this, at this proposal, we really need to keep in mind and be very cognizant of. Because we don't want, we want to make sure that this project doesn't, um, get in the way of that, 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 that sense, that sensation is preserved. And I, and I feel that at this particular height, it, what it, it does is, and some, and I think someone on the applicant's team talked about it's being a, a transition. It's not supposed to be a transition. I think we still want to feel that we're crossing into this very special historic area, and we want to retain this, uh, the sense of that. I don't think that, and I appreciate the applicants, um, going through the massing between what's been approved and what they're looking for with a change in the zoning. But again, it's not, it's not an either-or. And if the, if the height of this project came down a bit, which I think it needs to do, doesn't mean that there can't be a thoughtful, there can't be an application to change the zoning so that the setbacks are more consistent with what exists already. Um, and I, I certainly appreciate, uh, the applicants looking to do that, no matter what the height of the buildings are. I, I also want to just go back to some very fundamental things about this building's makeup. And I understand that the, the base is commercial. Then there's, uh, affordable housing, resident, which I think probably rentals, and then there are condos above. It just seems that on the, at, at the commercial, um, hi, the commercial floor-to-floor heights and the condo floor-to-floor heights are, are higher than they need to be. And that if those were shaved off a little bit, that would automatically bring the height of this project down. And so at a minimum, I think the applicant should be, should be looking at that. I, I have to say, and I just want to go back to what was approved, and I realize it was quite a while ago, but the, the, um, the commission did reject a couple of proposals, and then they finally, we finally approved one. And it's clear that over the years, there was a lot of thought that went into this. And I think, I, I personally believe that the project can be a little higher than what was approved. But, um, I think that the commission's initial, um, inclination in keeping the, uh, keeping the height a little lower is one that we should stay with. It's still appropriate today, given what the context is. I, I have to say that, and I'm, I'm not going to spend a ton of time talking about, um, materiality. I'm just going to speak sort of generally about some of these issues. Because I, I feel like the, the whole massing of the project really has to be addressed. But, but, you know, SOM is a very talented firm, and I don't think that, that this project is, um, one that measures up to what they could do here. I think there's something very, and I hate to use this word. It's, it's just almost standardized about how this project. It's, it's just almost standardized about how this project looks. And for a project to have such an incredible presence in this streetscape, I, I feel like they, uh, we need to, they need to take another look at that. And I'm just going to, in a quite, in one or two of their, in quite a few of their, views, you know, our eyes, almost like in Bilbao, fall on the, uh, the, the Geary building. And I'm not, I'm not saying that they should look to that building because the project should be designed like that. But I do wanna say that that is a striking, and appropriate piece of architecture, significant architecture in this building that's not gonna leave the landscape. We may end up, you know, future LPCs may end up landmarking that building. And, um, it's, it is an amazing addition to what's around it. And if you have the opportunity to make an imprint on this neighborhood, I think, I think it behooves the applicant to think a little bit more creatively about what it is that they're gonna leave here for, you know, generations, centuries to come. If we don't destroy ourselves before that. So that's, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna leave in this instance, the nitty gritty to, to my fellow commissioners. I do wanna speak about the, the, um, the museum project. Because I believe we're supposed to weigh in on that. I happen to think that this is a terrific piece of architecture. I think it's incredibly well thought out. I think it, it speaks to the past, you know, everything from, um, the, you know, the arched windows at the base to the, um, you know, the reputation, the, the overall bulk, the repetition of the windows. I especially like the connection, the, the glass connection between the old and the new. They, it's, you know, it only joins them and, and connects the facility itself. But it, it speaks to old and new, and it just works visually and it breaks up, it breaks up the massing. My, my only thought, and, and a lot of people, I, 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 I appreciate the thinking about, uh, you know, using the copper and its connection to ship hulls. And I actually think the, and I love the use of metal here. I think maybe the applicant should take another look at the material. Because I am not so sure that we want this material to change color. And so change to a green color. Maybe it's a material that rusts to this color. I, I'm just, all I know is that when I look at the plan here, I feel that it's, it works really well as it is. And, um, you know, so it should be under consideration. I just wanna see if there's anything else that I wanna say before I pass it along to people who are gonna get into more detail. I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's it. I'm not gonna get into us, this, you know, the setbacks and everyone else will speak.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to go next?
Yes, yes. I'll start with, uh, 89 South Street. I, I accept it as a civic building. So therefore, I think if you start with the base, I think the base, the concrete base is fine. And the proportions work very well. I think the middle copper is fine and the window systems work very well. I, I, I do agree with my fellow commissioner, that I, I didn't think about this before, that perhaps turning green might be too, uh, maybe, be a little, stick out too much, maybe, maybe if it was a core 10 or something. But I, that's a question I didn't think about. It's a good, good, uh, good point that I hadn't thought about. The roof bulkhead at the top, the shape and materiality of that, I find inappropriate because it, it, it should be simpler. Right now, it's kind of a cantilevered, uh, volume on top of another volume. And it's, and, and some, from some views, you see it quite well. It could be simplified. It has rounded corners. It's, it's quite modern. It's different from the context. So I, I, I think it could be made simpler. At the hall, I think the zipper, the glass zipper works very well. I think the entry is quite marvelous. So those are my comments on that building. On 250 Water,
Everardo, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you maybe speak closer?
And start over if you would, Everardo, on the, on the 250 Water comments. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The context is so unique and so special. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. And I will start with the building itself. I'll start with the base. The proportion, the base itself, the, the height of it, the 71 feet datum, is really quite nice. It works very well. And I think it sets up a dialogue with the existing fabric, which is quite nice. I, I do think that the, and the system they use to come up, to, to come up with the window penetration, solid and void, makes sense. The windows are a little bit larger in the vertical dimension and shallower in the horizontal dimension, but it's, it's fine. My issue though, with, with, with the base is that the color is so strong. And it's, it's not really needed because the color and the repetition of the color and the repetition of the, it becomes too repetitious. And the color, the color doesn't, doesn't work well with its neighbors. So for example, if you look at, um, Water Street, East Elevation. Okay.
Everardo, your, your, your sound is fading out again. We can't really hear you. Everardo?
Everardo, we can't, we can't hear you. Can you just repeat? I don't know if he can hear us.
Yeah, I don't know what we're gonna do. Everardo? Everardo?
Everardo, can you hear me? We can't, Everardo, we didn't hear any of that. Can you repeat it? I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now? Like, I'm having problems with, um,
Yes, yes, we can hear you now. I'm sorry, you'll have to start all over.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we were, I, we, I think we got as far as the, the color is being strong and, and repetitious. But then I think after that, I, I didn't get much after that.
Okay. So I went to the image of, uh, on the left hand side, the base level, the pedestrian level. And how the lower level has different variety of materials. It has stone, brick, and, and very active. On, on the right hand side, it's very repetitious, kind of monotonous in its base pedestrian level. So I would say they should study that level and also study the colors. I think the color should be simplified. Even if they keep the same proportion, simplify the color. From one, the one, two, three, fours. Then I looked at between the base and the tower, there is a transition space, which I call staggered, it's a staggered transition. And, uh, that portion, the staggered portion. And that's so, it doesn't work within the district. I haven't seen any building that had that kind of staggering transition between base, tower. It's kind of a middle transition. And if that was simplified, I think it would work, the language would work better with the, with the existing fabric. And finally, the tower, um, I commend the tower. The exterior spaces are quite nice and it, it does work, the two of them, quite handsome. But I think they're too big, too large for this context. And, and may, and it maybe should be rethought, lowered, maybe one, maybe a bar, maybe something else. But right now, it's, it's overwhelming. I mean, it's just, and the, it, the transition zone, that staggered section is so, they should review that and re-study that. Those are my comments.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Gustafson?
Uh, this, this is certainly a, uh, a complex application. Let's start with, uh, 89 South Street. For the most part, I, I, I love the 89 South Street building. I, I do, um, I do think that, uh, and maybe Everardo was getting to this. You know, the, the, in its particular site, in the context of the buildings around it, it is a little bit on the blocky side, which is to say the roof lines of the buildings on that, on, on South Street are, are, are much more gentle than what you see there. Um, and, and so I would ask them to look at that idea. It could even take on an additional, um, an additional story if it, 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 it wasn't such a sharp edge. As far as the, the, I did not consider that question of the patination and the, the, this would be a big green building on the corner. And that's a really, really good point. You know, the copper I love, but if the copper could stay as, as, as it is, you know, that'd be wonderful. But we'll just change the properties of physics maybe for that. And, uh, so otherwise, I am, I'm fine with 89 South Street. 250 Water Street, um, you know, I'll, I'll start with, um, you know, quoting what somebody testified. They said that in order for us to approve this, quote, "We must ignore the law."
Oh, you're breaking up.
John, we missed that. You're, start again.
The possible sophistry. Now, now, as a philosophy major, can you hear me now?
Yes, but you broke up. You quoted the, you quoted the testimony and then we missed your point after that.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The, uh, I don't think that we're actually, I, I certainly think that we're, we're, we're not going to ignore the law in the way that the, uh, the testimony suggested. I think we are on the right track here. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure that I would characterize the, um, the applicants as engaging in sophistry. But we do need to take seriously that, that concept, which is to say, you know, when we look at, and, and that, that, I think that that sophistry is all about this concept of transition. Let's take this building, you know, apart from that transition concept.
Oh, and what's going on?
John, you're frozen.
You're frozen.
John, you just froze. So you were breaking, you said, let's break this up and then you froze. And you're frozen.
Frozen now.
John, shall I?
Maybe move on to Adi and then come back to John. And I, I don't, unless John can fix this problem.
Yeah, it's, yes.
Okay. Yes, let's do that, John. We'll come back to you. I'm sorry, you're completely frozen.
And maybe call in, John. Maybe call in if that would, without the video, maybe that will help. We're not sure.
Okay, go ahead. Say, Adi.
Thanks. Uh, so to start, I think I agree with quite a few of the comments about the John Street site. I, I think there are a lot of interesting things about the building, the proposal. It feels rather schematic, but it almost feels like that's what it wants to be is, um, is quite, it's quite simple. I, I actually have no problem with this possibility of the changing color. I think that that's, I, I don't think we, I think we've never really seen that, an entire building that changes color. And I think that the, this notion of it being right on the water, um, i- is actually very interesting. And so I, I would support that. And, and would, would wanna kind of, I think I'd want to see it again as it develops. But, um, in, um, I, I think that what they proposed thus far is very convincing. Uh, in reference to the 250 Water Street site. So firstly, I really appreciate the, today's presentation, the brief presentation of this, of, for us to understand the podium in relation to the street wall and relation to what is, as of right, street wall. It was important to see those, um, those renderings. And, uh, I, I, I think that there's a lot to be done there to, to understand, to refine. But there is, there, there's work that can be done there. So I, I want to, I appreciate that. And I think that that's, uh, for us to focus on that, on the street wall, on the, uh, the first, the first stories and what they can be is, is, uh, there's a lot of possibility there. And I think that the applicants made tremendous, uh, sort of inroads and, and consider, and has considered it thoughtfully and convincingly. Now to the kind of the more troubling and, and difficult part of the project. I think it's true and, and important to say that we don't opine on zoning contexts. But, and it's the, it is the case that, um, when the LPC designated South Street Seaport District in 77, the C64 zoning allowed for high-rise development, right by 2003, uh, through Seaport Community Coalition Partnership and Community Board One. The Yule changed that and from C64, C628. And, um, and, and the, it was rezoned to allow, to, to disallow a kind of high-rise development beyond 120 feet. Now, the only reason I'm recounting that is to say that it's really important to consider that during all of those years, I mean, to, to underscore the fact that we don't opine or consider zoning context because, because during all of those intervening years, LPC did in fact, uh, you know, do some significant work, deliberation. And as we know, well before the zoning changes, it rejected at least four proposals. There, there were so many.
Three.
Three proposals, excuse me, I'm sorry. They, but I meant to say they saw many proposals, many more than four. Am I right about that? The Franz, several of the, two friends and the, um, Jan here at the Corney, the, uh, Emery Roth, Emery Roth in 88, I think. And in the Charles Platt, several of the 15-story, 12-story. In any event, three, three were rejected. And, and of course, one approved in '91, the 11-story platte fired building. But what's interesting to me, so in fact, rejected during, during this period of time when their, you know, zoning permitted high-rise development there. And I need to think about, I mean, how often does this commission reject projects? I don't think that I can even recall the more than two or three occasions in the years that I've been here that that's occurred. And so I am really, I find myself asking, what is it that I don't understand about this commission's repeated rejections of the tall buildings on the 98 block? And to what extent the criteria that they used then, visibility, conformity to kind of typical historical periods or, or styles of architecture, this, you know, are the important things that we talked about that are important, you know, that we often speak about, the sense of place, coherent streetscape. What don't I understand about the rejections in the years before, in '91, and after, that, where they cite this, you know, the ways in which tall, whether they're 40-foot or 40-story or 20-story, or even less, proposals dominated or overwhelmed, that was the language, you know, in those reports, overwhelmed the homogeneous quality or interrupted vistas. Really, in a sense, I'm asking myself, what has changed? Are we? What has changed between then and now? And should it lead to our ability to potentially consider what the measures or appropriateness should be? And so are we actually being asked to reconsider the terms of appropriateness or to define them anew? And I'm really, I hear what you said, Chair Carroll, today about, on the one hand, the things that we sort of shouldn't consider, and on the other hand, this kind of, the notion that appropriateness is a continuum. And I find that that's really very valuable to think about. So, but I'm asking, if in fact, if I can't figure out what has changed between the commissioner's assessments in all of those rejections in this moment, I need to say, okay, well then, what are the terms of appropriateness that might, how is that appropriateness continuing, moving? And might be that there are other, other considerations that in fact we should consider? And so, for instance, should, and you've said no to this commission, Chair Carroll, and I want to ask it again. Should a bar for appropriateness be contingent on the project's ability to garner benefits and support to local civic organizations? And I'm asking that question again. And with respect to that, I'm saying, I would like to know, if a tower had been proposed, a tower of 400 feet had been proposed for the John Street site, it seems to me that the supporters that we heard from might have thought that appropriate or approvable or good because of, in exchange for the economic benefits. But let's say we absolutely, and as you say, do not consider that to be a kind of a measure, a criteria for appropriateness, then that starts to say that really maybe a new measure for appropriateness should be, that it's, that super tall or tall buildings on the interior of a district are not appropriate, but tall buildings at the edge of a district are appropriate, and we should be a little bit more lenient or consider lots of other aspects of the design in order to say that they are appropriate on the periphery of a district. Or should we be considering this historic district based on what we're now so much more of, which are sort of historic, particular historic themes or arcs, sort of social narratives of history rather than like material narratives of history? So for instance, should we be thinking of Peter Shermerhorne, who of course was a speculative developer, who filled 600 feet of a section of the river super fast and didn't let it settle, and so the Ro, Shermerhor Row is a bit settled, you know, there's, you know, there are markers of those leaning walls and floors, and he had a tremendous windfall from the Brooklyn Ferry landing and Fulton Market that arrived. Should we be kind of referencing that moment of development on the site, which occurred early on? Or should another narrative that we should consider be the fact of the, the history of the Seaport Museum and its relationship to the district? Which is to say that as back as far as the 60s, the downtown lower Manhattan and the Concession and the City Hall adopted the Seaport Museum as a proxy and privatized its public function by naming the museum the unofficial unassisted sponsor. And so it became, the museum became and was charged with the task of redevelopment in an urban renewal district, the first of its kind. So in a sense, the role, the relationship between the museum and the district is one that needs to be framed, to be remembered, to be preserved. And that in the same way that the museum saved the neighborhood from demolition all those many years ago, maybe it's, it's going to save the district today. And it, you know, and that brings me to another aspect, is another kind of term of appropriateness, one that has to do with the vicissitudes of the economy. You know what? When the district was designated, 2008 had not happened with the, and the reception, the recession that followed, 2012 and Sandy and the sustainability issues and the climate change issue did not yet surface despite the fact that they'd been written about planning by Carson and others. And certainly, you know, this moment, you know, in our current troubles, there, we haven't seen in 100 years. So maybe those are terms for, for rethinking appropriateness. And I do not think it is unreasonable for us to consider these new definitions or enhanced criteria for appropriateness. On the other hand, there's one more hand. I have one more hand, and that is, maybe the 250 Water Street site shouldn't even be part of the district. As we know, the 106 block next door was excluded for a brief moment. I don't really even know why it's in the district. So would love to hear from you and from commissioners about that. Finally, I just want to say that absent these alternative criteria for appropriate development, and particularly in recognition of the serious work of the previous LPC staff, and also obviously of the commissioners lengthening and repeated deliberations even before rezoning, I'm finding it really hard to understand, to come up with a good reason to depart from their assessments. And so really can't see or understand what might have us approve such a tall, 400-plus foot development on this site. I agree with you, it's not just a site, it's a full block, but I can't understand how to depart and why. And I really want to hear from the other commissioners about their thoughts. I agree with Commissioner Lutti, development is obviously reasonable here. Certainly, we have approved it in the past. Let's talk about ways to do it, but can't understand how we might depart so radically from previous commissions' assessments.
Okay, thank you very much. And, you know, I mean, I think to the question about why it was included, we don't know why it was included. Presumably, it was included to ensure the commission would regulate future development here. But we don't really have the answer to that question. But I can say that, you know, there is no other lot of this size on the edge of any other historic district, no lot of this size in the interior or on the edge of any other historic district. It is truly a unique site in that it's a full block long. So, and I do think that, you know, as you, you know, I think that the terms of appropriateness are defined under the law, as I outlined in the beginning. But I think that as sort of secondary factor, many of the things, the questions that you raise are valid questions and things that I think that can enhance or support findings, but specifically with respect to appropriateness, as I said, I think thinking about this notion of transfer, the transfer mechanisms that were created at this time, and the Seaport Museum's relationship with the district, one could think about this very unique site differently than you might in other districts. But much to think about, and you've raised some really good questions that I think we should all be continuing to think about. Okay. I just want to go back to Commissioner Gustafson. If you're, if you think that your signal is stable now, perhaps we can return to you.
I apologize for that. I assume you can hear me now, I've switched devices.
Yes.
So I'm actually kind of thrilled that I, that I got to have that little gap so I could hear what's going on in the nooks and crannies of Commissioner Shamir Baron's mind. The, I don't happen to live in any of her imaginary worlds, but I love, I love them. But I can answer one of the questions about, you know, whether we should be considering, you know, large donations like this, and that is this. We, this commission was created in a very, very peculiar way as compared to other commissions in this city. And, and many of them were designed to, to make sure that we are dollars neutral. We're not allowed to consider, you know, financial wherewithal of the applicant. And, and that's true whether they don't have money or whether they have scads of money. Indeed, it extends to the point of being unpaid commissioners. The idea is that we can't be influenced by that. We're not allowed to be. It's illegal for us to do that. We can't do that. So going back to then my, my reality world, there are two ways in which I experienced this district as a, as a lifetime New Yorker. One is as a child, my father was for 45 years a sailor. And, and he used to walk me from his Union Hall on the west side of the, of downtown Manhattan over to the Seaport, when it was not much of anything, except that it was this, to a child, this amazing grouping of low-scale buildings that took me to a place that was different from the canyons that I think Commissioner Shamir Baron, or maybe it was Commissioner Lutti referred to. The second was later in life, the approach driving into Manhattan over the, over the Brooklyn Bridge. And I am warned by our general counsel that I'm not allowed to talk about the views from cars, which apparently are not legitimate. However, I could have been walking over the Brooklyn Bridge. And, and the view from there is that of a very low scale, a uniquely low scale neighborhood. And so in order to get past that 100% low scale within the district, I'm going to have to believe in the transition concept. And, you know, as we're told by the applicant, you know, it's difficult to, to define the district because of that parking lot that is there right now. And so my question is, well, does your building make it worse or better? Does it make it easier or harder to define the district? And I, and, and I think it's fairly clear that this neighborhood is, again quoting the applicant, perceived as a low collection of buildings with tall buildings as a backdrop. Emphasis on the, as a backdrop, not as part of the district. I am, if in fact, as Commissioner Shamir Baron suggests, this, this particular lot should not have been in the district in the first place, then you could do whatever you want, and that's perfectly fine. But that's not where we are. It is part of the district. It's either in or it's out. There is no, as far as I know, in the statute, there is no definition of on the edge, and therefore, we have a different standard for on the edge versus in the center. The criteria that Commissioner Carroll laid out are exactly the same in all contexts. So, you know, we might as well, if we build these buildings, carve this block out of the district, because they mesh the district into what is outside of the district. Now with regard to the, the base, I am, I'm mostly happy with the, with the, with the base of the building. I am, the applicant's reliance on the comparison between what they're doing and as of right makes it crystal clear to me that if they were to propose to me, which they're not, a building that was as of right, I would find that I agree with them. That would be, as of right is too much. I think they're right about that. They convinced me about that. But the, the important thing is that, that scale of that base meshes with the scale of the district as a whole. I think I'm a little, I'm not very comfortable with the sort of parabolic image of that base, you know, the low ends and the, and the higher center. There's something about it that makes it, you know, all these buildings tend to be very, this is a wonderful image, right? I mean, you look at the front, the foreground, and each building is almost clearly defined from the next, you know? It doesn't look like they're all one big thing. And in that, in theirs, because of the parabolic shape, the four or five segments in the middle make it look like one continuum. Now maybe the change in texture and color of brick might make that look a little different, but, but certainly I'm okay with that, with that, with the base in terms of its height. I'm not saying that I couldn't approve something that is taller than, than that, than that base, or even taller than there as of right, or taller than the previous proposal. But, but I think it's fairly clear, when you look at this from the, certainly from the Brooklyn Bridge angle, that it tells you that, this is, what it says to me is, I am no longer in the district. It doesn't say to me, I neatly transitioned to the district. It says, you know, the district ended, you know, a block further in than I am right now. So I, I am not, and I, I never get to the question of its, the details of its design. I do, I think, I think I do agree with Commissioner Lutti that, you know, that tower has lots of room for improvement, or the two towers have a lot of room for improvement. But, but as, you know, as it stands, if I'm not going to consider the things I'm not allowed to, the affordable housing, the donations to the museum, the zoning limitations or previous approvals, then this is where I am. I will go, I will revert to a more primitive approach. I will look at the district in its full context, and, and it does not, it does not meet the appropriateness standard in that regard.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to move to Commissioner Chapin.
Thank, thank you, Sarah. I'll start with the museum, as others have, because it's, I think, the easy one to look at. I also find that the modern design, I think it's very attractive. I think it's very well done. I think that the interpretation, using some gestures like the shutters and the fenestration to connect to the district, and the use of the, even the use of the material and the way it's detailed, I think is, is very effective. I also like the glass transition. I agree with the comment that was made about the rooftop, that that's a little odd and it needs to be, it's, that sort of parabolic structure just looks a little strange up there, and some, it calls attention to itself, and I think something should be done to regularize that a bit. The issue of the copper material is very interesting. Like Commissioner Shamir Baron, I think that the, it's, it is interesting, it's a definite possibility for those commissioners that are wondering about the color, the applicant actually gave on page 76 of the first presentation, their estimation of how the betina would change. At the same time, I really like the way this looks and the current color, as many other commissioners did. And, you know, maybe a safer approach might be to just use a material of this color, which does fit in very well and in the current context of the district, I think. And I also think the storefronts, or rather, the entryway of a museum, the way the street level is treated, I find that very satisfactory. So very much in approval of this, and I could even consider the copper cladding, though, as I said, it might as I said, it might be safer to go with something that will not transition in color. On the issue of the towers, I do think that a taller building is possible here. It is, at the same time, it's it's difficult looking at the issue that we are not supposed to really consider buildings outside the district and as a context, in which case, obviously, if we're just looking at the district itself, which in real life we don't, we look at, we look at the things that are in the backdrop and the background. But it's hard, I do find that, for me, because it's it's at the boundary of the district and on the edge, I do see it somewhat differently, just as we sometimes look at corners of streets as having a somewhat different, you know, possibility, this in the, as far as height. I think that the other thing that's interesting to me is, because this is a large parking lot, I think it was probably secured in order to kind of give some protection for the district of, you know, just not anything can be built there. Something had to be reviewed by the committee. But at the moment, it is not in any way really contributing to the district, other, more than the street, the outside street would be contributing. So I think, you know, it behooves us to really consider, you know, what we can, what might be possible here. As far as the approach of the applicant, I think that the way they've dealt with the street wall in general, the street wall in general, trying to use colors, texture, to break up the sense of a large massive building is good. The idea of having a base that's, it's, you know, appropriate and fitting into the district in terms of, you know, the pedestrian perception is good, I think, has has been suggested that there could be, they could go further in that direction as Commissioner Jefferson suggested, and including the the individual commercial streetfront, the first floor, looking at that, maybe to do some more in that regard. I think that the terracing, which no one has really commented on much, but I find that that transition very, yeah, thank you, that I find that transition very, you know, it doesn't work for me. It really calls attention to itself and is very uncharacteristic. I think someone referred to that. But anyway, I find that element just, I think it really should not should not be there, that it's creating the wrong kind of trend. It's an attempt to make a transition, but it's really just an element that's very intrusive in calling attention to itself. I personally think that the towers are, if, I actually think the tower approach is the wrong way to go here, to try to create a bigger building. I think if a bigger building that was proposed with a base and actually a building on top of that, that was just one building, as opposed to towers, would be more appropriate to the district and to the immediate surroundings of this area, of this of this district and building than the high towers, more like some of the apartment buildings that were built in the area. So I do think if there are towers, the towers are too tall, but the approach I would think would be more compatible would be, as I said, some kind of a an addition to a higher, a higher level, you know, building after the podium, but that it would be one building, and it could be indented, or, you know, there could be ways to make, break it up, but that it would not be actually two separate towers. That's that's what I think would be more compatible with the district. I think I'm gonna, that's, those are, you know, I think we have some large issues here, so I'm not going to go into more detail. I think I've covered most of the main issues for me.
That's, thank you very much. Commissioner Goldblum.
Thank you. I, I, the negative of such a long testimony is that I had time to write notes. So I'll have, I'm going to read a little bit. The issue of linkage has been addressed already. We, you know, the applicants go on to great lengths to try to link the projects financially, et cetera. That is not part of our scope. And while I agree with with Adi that there might be a scenario in which you could consider that kind of linkage between the museum and this site, which is remote to it, that's not the world of the commission that we work in, and I don't think we should apply it here as the first time. I think that the existing building, existing museum buildings, which are proposed to be integrated into each other and into the new building, the restoration of the existing buildings and the expanded situation for are appropriate. Though, when making the connections between the historic buildings at their backs, the removal of existing material should be limited. The eighty-nine South Street Museum Building, I agree with other people that, other people who've spoken, or other commissioners have spoken, that it's generally an appropriate design. I think that the copper-clad facade is appropriate, even if it turns green. It will blend with the district in scale and texture while reading clearly as a new modern building. Same thing for the sunshades and shutters. They are rooted in the district's material history. The rooftop structures are not sufficiently subsidiary to the structure. The concrete bunker should be reduced in size and visibility and further set back to dramatically reduce its visibility over the main volume. If you look at the aerial view of that block, you will see that it has very few, if any, rooftop additions and that the roof scape is very uniform. The use of a heavy timber structure in the new building is wonderful and should be a feature of future developments in historic districts. The idea that we can recommend that applicants consider structure as a historically contributing element broadens the scope of preservation beyond facades and is as such very worthwhile. The arched base is less successful to me. Storefronts are very important to the experience of this district. I would hope that the building base would hew more closely to the traviated, dimensionally-articulated quality of the district's storefronts within a modern design language. Reposed aluminum storefront framing looks fairly common and very heavy. The precedent for arches seemed less relevant to me than the more prevalent characteristic storefronts. Related to the two fifty Water Street building, from an urbanism and scale perspective, the proposal for the high-rise towers relies on the original city planning plan for the district, the sketches that were shown at the outset with the tall towers on the block. But the regulatory history of the site since that time tells a story that undermines the argument. The nineteen seventy-seven LPC designation postdated the city planning plan, indicating that the zoning was purposely changed, overlaid with a preservation limitation by the purposeful exceptional inclusion of this vacant lot into the district. Any new development was intended to be governed not only by city planning zoning policies, but also by landmarks and the historic preservation criteria governing it, knowing that this often results in bulk limitations beyond as-of-right zoning. Later downzoning confirms the irrelevancy of the original zoning sketches that this proposal relies on, indicating a convergence of intent between city planning and landmarks, that this site should not have high-rise towers on it. But as the applicant's counsel made clear this morning, landmarks is empowered to disregard zoning land, zoning, and make use, make its judgment solely based on its evaluation of appropriateness. This makes the comparison renderings that we saw today totally irrelevant. Streetscape and scale are central to our preservation mission. The proposal posits that the contextually scaled plinth constitutes the principal urban relationship of new to old, that the towers relate to and are experienced as part of the surrounding city outside of the district. I fundamentally disagree with this approach, as others have. The historic district is identifiable by virtue of its volume. As a chunk of urban fabric, a swath of city relatively consistent building heights nestled between the river and a palisade of taller, newer buildings to its south and west, the visibility of the site from the bridge, from the highway, from the promenade in Brooklyn Heights, all make clear that towers would have a tangible, significant material impact on the public preservation, public perception of the district. To allow taller volumes is to invade the district's sky space even above a plinth would be a literal violation of the district's defining unifying qualities. Just like Jean had said, the void in the three-dimensional topography of the city above the district is as significant in defining it spatially as the brick buildings below. The contextual relationship with surrounding towers is completely irrelevant. It is the commission's job to preserve the contrast of the historic district from the nonhistoric surroundings. The contrast between the district and surroundings depends on the strength of the inviolable bright line between them. Looking at the proposal's design in details, the architecture of the proposed building is also, in my opinion, problematic. The plinth tries to blend with the Water Street context only. The steps cap above the street walls and the two tall towers together have a different identity that relates ineffectively to the base. The plinth-designed facades do not achieve the intention to blend with the district on Water Street or elsewhere. The applicant's analysis of the variety of the existing context surrounding the site is accurate. But the undifferentiated plinth design does not recognize or reflect the varied conditions at the Pearl Street, Peck Slip, and Beekman Street fronts. The new building should contribute positively to the uniqueness of its site and the district and seek to blend and complement it in all of its details and varieties at each location. But even evaluated on Water Street, the design is, in my opinion, inappropriate. The regularity, apparent symmetry, and rhythm of the facade segments serve to join the faux streetscape ensemble together into a single, large-scale design, very similar to what John said, that looks disproportionately large and out of scale. The regularity of the design, strengthened by the rhythmic stepping and plan, creates the scale of a megastructure totally alien to the district. The Water Street facade especially should more closely resemble the scale and rhythm of the building's opposite and of the district's defining streetscapes while retaining its identity as a modern, single building in an architecturally honest way. A better way to start here would be for the applicant to look at how New York buildings from the period share, that share the scale of their proposal, a block-long structure, handle their facades, or alternately, they could break their structure down into building units that are more in proportion with the district, not just facade appliques trying to mask a massive structure. A critical aspect of the appropriateness of scale is street wall height. The street wall height on Water Street starts out well at the corners, but in the center is too high and overall results in a too symmetrical mass that emphasizes the large scale of the development. The setbacks setbacks above the street wall, as noted by others, are aggressively masked in a sugar cube pyramid configuration at the corners and a wedding cake profile in the center. The setbacks at the corners are visually busy, giving the prominent top to the plinth that is totally alien to the district's simple, modest, utilitarian buildings. The mid-block step base is too close to the street wall and adds to the mass and height of the buildings as experienced at street level. The overall concept and proportions of the street wall design misconstrue the district's modest, simple punched-wall language into a post-and-beam expression, which you can see on this, on this view, resulting in a distortion of the district's characteristic early nineteenth-century brick-wall punched quality. There is no delicacy or texture to the facades, with several design choices that contribute to the impression of massiveness and grandeur that is antithetical to the modesty of the district. Storefront scale, height, and materiality should also be looked at carefully. The design's regular storefronts look a lot taller than the district norm, as far as I can tell from the presentation. The monumental precast fluted pilasters that define the base seem to lack detail, dimension, and tactility that are such defining characters, characteristics of the district. The design language of the towers is intended to blend with and belong to the out-of-district neighbors. This is not OK. The architecture of the towers cannot and should not disengage from the district if they were to be appropriate. The design in details are as impactful on the historic district as the details of the plinth. The design of the tower seeks to mix with, mix new details from the plinth with a market-focused, amenity-driven, contemporary design. And I share Jean's view that it's a fairly, you know, workaday design. The deep balconies and tripartite windows specifically should be looked at in terms of their appropriateness to the district. The towers possess a monumental scale with their deeply sculpted, double-height balconies and grids. They exaggerate the disparity in scale between the base and the towers. So the question, the question that I think the applicant would be left with is, can any towers be built in this site? I don't think so. Our precedent, as seen in three other rejections of similarly scaled projects, argue that despite the passage of several decades, under commission members with widely varied views, the consensus has been no to towers. We commissioners judge all proposals in all districts based primarily on the visual impact of the proposal on the district when viewed from the public way. To be deemed appropriate, the height and mass of the development, as seen from within the district and from public spaces further away, must preserve the scale of the district. Based by that simple, consistent standard, any tall tower here would fail. That said, a building that stepped up somewhat on its western edge along Pearl Street to a height above that of the district core could be acceptable to me, as long as the volume would result in a mass that would meet the commission's usual context-based appropriateness standards. For me, this translates into a project that carefully blends and complements the district on its Water Street facade and in other vistas, visible from this district's heart. On other street fronts, it can stray further in scale and design from those archetypes based on the specifics of those sites. But the project raises a broader issue. The city in the seventies sought to incentivize support for the historic district by allowing the transfer of development rights to areas more suited to larger development. This site is a pioneer in that history, this district, and it now is an example of how that policy is not working well enough. The city should do more to help the Seaport District and historic districts more broadly by creating greater flexibility in transferring development rights to sites in undesignated areas, even those remote from the immediate site. Let the developer monetize his asset, provide needed low-income housing, support the museum and other community groups without harming the precious historic district.
Great, thank you very much. All right, and Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. I would like to have your permission and the indulgence to, for me, spend a couple of minutes to talk about, you know, the the context and the background before I get to the specifics of the latest proposal.
Of course.
You know, so to let you get into the nooks and crannies of my mind, like Commissioner Gustafson said eloquently, the so-called, you know, a view from the seventy thousand-mile uplooking town, right? For those of you that do not know, my father was, much like John, was a seaman, and he was a merchant marine ship captain, and he perished at sea. He went down with his ship as the last person to jump over the propeller, as a few survivors saw him fulfill his duty in that biggest typhoon, bigger than Sandy Typhoon half a century ago when I was a little kid. So, so it is with profound sadness, last week, in sitting, listening to nine hours of concerns and fearful testimonies, I felt as though I'm sitting on the, the captain's walk, or what is called the widow's walk, you know, the balcony view, looking back at the ship that never arrived, that should have been back, the crew that never came back, and the sacrifices that, whether they went through the Cape of and the sacrifices that, whether they went through the Cape of, the Cape Horn, Diego Fuera, South, South, South America, the thousands of shipwrecks, not seeing their families for months or never made it home. And so, as you know, to me, I love the city and they are, you know, there are two things I love about, is, is rich history, is unique history, as the origin, the source of the Nile, so to speak, and the Seaport. Because I, my office is about half a mile up or a mile up, and I, I, as much as I possible, I walk down there. And clearly, this is a 50-year experiment that failed. I was Googling last night, looking at the 10 greatest harbor in the world. Just randomly, anecdotally, they list the Sydney, they list the Singapore, they list Vancouver, Hong Kong, none of them listed New York. And so, and yet, I know how much of this, so many people that want to preserve the Seaport, and so do I. And I think that this is what the profound tragedy is, which is that this nation and this country owe so much to, you know, Giovanni Verrazano, to Henry Hudson, to deal with Clinton, to create the additional Seaway. Seventy percent of the world is covered by water. And it is due to water that gave rise to this nation. And due to water that gave rise to so many civilizations, every civilization began near water. So, that's why I, I look at this and then says, this is a baby that everyone wants to preserve and treasure. And we left it as an orphan, 50 years of experiment. And just say, you go out there unsupported, non-sustaining model, and you fend for yourself. You raise the fund, you do the things. And I'm looking at owners, different ownership come and go, the different mayors come and go, Ross Corporation, General Properties, and Howard Hughes. And now, you know, as in the testimony, just Howard Hughes may unload as well. Right? And so, this is my fundamental lesson in learning 13 years as a community board in Queens, and was the landmark chair, that somebody has to care for this baby. Somebody has to pay for this baby. And as Commissioner Goldblum just said correctly, we all have a role. City has a role. The private sector has a role, the citizens have a role. And we're expecting a miracle, just to say, hey, this is, you know, without the volunteers, without the half a century volunteer effort, all the, all the people to help to save the Seaport, the people that saved the Bauhaus printing typefaces after Superstorm Sandy. So now, to me, this is like the water coming in, right? We know that, and looking at the 1989 South Street Seaport Museum, the base arches, I thought the design intent was to, just in case the water comes in again for the future Sandy that took out the Paris Cafe, the oldest cafe on the waterfront that totally destroyed it, you have a chance of taking this torrent of water. And so that's why I want to take a look about the other discussion, even though it may not be the purview of LPC, but a more holistic look is to say, do we want to do a managed retreat? An evacuation zone that move further inland, like all the coastal cities and communities are starting to recognize. And if you want to sustain and preserve this treasure of a gem and sustain the future, do you need to elevate the baseline? Because we know the waterline is going to be coming back again, right? And, and this is also the worst time, because the government is clearly out of money. Right? And so now I'm sitting here looking at, I wish King Solomon is alive, sitting next to us right now. They place a guandry on our lap, split the baby in two. I dare you. Do you want to do that? Right? So we look at this city and we look at this thing that we had, have loved and enjoyed for half a century, I've been here for half a century in this city, and seeing the evolution of this city, right? From the turmoil, the chaos, we used to be the World Trade Center on the Seaport. We shifted that, the manufacturing came and gone, the fish came and gone. One Chase Plaza got, got built and got shifted. So, the question I struggle for myself right now is that, how would my father judge this case? How would I honor his sacrifice and all the thousands of seamen that went down to sea? All the family that sacrificed? And the road of that contribution of all these Fulton steamship that brought this nation? How would they judge this case? And my biggest fear right now, normally I'm an optimist. My biggest fear right now is that would this owner then turn around? What guarantee do I have? He will not turn around and unload and just say, this is not worth it. So my question to is, is, is this right now is, as Commissioner Goldblum said, this district was created out of transfer of air right policies. And it clearly did not work, it did not sustain the Seaport, it does not sustain the Seaport Museum. The question is, now what? What are the options and what is realistic and what is real? We can fool ourselves in thinking that, hey, there will be another savior and other things like that. So those are my thoughts. I can go into the specifics, but I, I thank you for the indulgence for this few minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. You know, I think it's so interesting that on so many of our projects, we hear many of your personal connections to the places that we regulate or designate. And I, I think that's why we do what we do, we have these special connections, and that's what motivates our dedication to appropriateness. So, thank you again, commissioners, for all of your thoughtful comments. I think this is the beginning of a long discussion, but lots of detailed and thoughtful and considered comments were laid out today, and lots of questions as well. And so I think we will take no action today. And I think, you know, I think we've had a lot of support for the John's 89 South Street, the museum building. Lots of questions about the color, so I think, you know, at some point, we could have more information on the color. Certainly lots of thoughts about the roof and the bulkhead and some thought, we could see some restudy on, on that, as well as seeing how the details develop as, as the design continues to develop. And on the 250 Water Street side, I think this, there's, there is a lot that we've thought about today. I think I've heard some openness for, well, I think everybody recognized the sort of failed experiment, as you put it, Commissioner Chen, and this site, which has remained an entire block vacant for all these years and not contributing to the district. So I think certainly the commission would be supportive of some development here, and that really the question is what, and parsing through all of our thoughts and questions today. And I think there has been some openness by commissioners, some commissioners, to consider something taller than the district. But I think that this approach is, is not at a point where anyone is comfortable right now. And so I think, thinking not only about height and massing and designing materials, but really thinking about the typology, which was raised by many commissioners as well, sort of tower-on-the-base typology. So I think what we'll do, we'll take no action and we'll ask the applicants to take some time to consider all of the comments that they've heard today. And we will let you know what the next steps are after that. So, you know, I want to thank the public who came and participated and put their, their time and effort into it. I'd also like to thank you all, commissioners, for really, you know, studying this, considering everything that we've heard, and really talking and expressing very thoughtful, considered comments today. So thank you all, and we will move to the next item now, and I'll turn it back to Cory.
Thank you, Sarah. The next meeting item is number three. This is LPC 21-02136, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 293, Lot 3, 12 through 16 Eldred Street, the Eldred Street Synagogue individual landmark. This is a synagogue building featuring Moorish, Gothic, and Romanesque-style elements, designed by Herter Brothers and built in 1886 to 87. The application is to install light poles in the front areaway and security cages at the rear fire escapes. This is read into the record at the public hearing of January 5th, 2021, but is being presented for the first time today.
And note, commissioners, that staff will be presenting this application with the applicants available for questions.
So we'll see if we need questions afterwards, and then we can open the proceedings for that. Okay.
Carol, I forgot I have to be recused from this.
Yes. Yes, you do. All right. So that's to just confirm, affirming for the record that Commissioner Chen will be recused on this item and has left the meeting. Okay. Is the staff going to begin?
Elizabeth, you can proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Elizabeth Diker, Preservation Staff. The application-
Liz, I just have an unusual question. Can you actually speak a little softer? Just, I think it's-
Sure.
Normally, we can't hear people, but it actually, I think with your mic is, is very clear.
Great. Well, great to hear. The application before you is to install light and security poles at the primary facade and to enclose fire escapes at the rear of the individually landmark Eldred Street Synagogue. The subject property is located on Eldred Street beneath, between Canal Street and Division Street. Here we can see the building as it appeared in a watercolor rendering from 1886, a 1940s tax photograph, as well as existing conditions documented in 2017. Here we can see existing conditions of the north areaway, which features bluestone paving, which is similar to the conditions at the south areaway. In this drawing, we can see the proposed light and security poles at the front of the areaway and as well as the rear fire escapes that the applicant team is proposing to enclose. In this elevation drawing, we can see the two light poles with floodlights and dome cameras mounted to the top, which are located in the areaway and the primary facade. Their installation would require the selective removal and reinstallation of bluestone for subsurface conduit. And the applicant team has already obtained revocable consent from DOT to install these fixtures technically outside the property line, but still within the areaway ironwork, where they can better survey the street. This slide shows the details of the proposed cameras, which feature 12-foot aluminum poles with a 5-inch diameter, mounted to an approximately 12-inch base. At the top of the pole, there will be an outrigger arm with a security camera and a pole-mounted floodlight, all of the black finish. Here we can see the north elevation with the proposed security poles at the front areaway and one of the rear fire escapes that the applicant team is proposing to enclose with a metal mesh system. Here is that same information for the south elevation. Here at the rear east elevation, we can see the extent of those fire escape mesh enclosures. Please note that at each fire escape, there are modified stained glass doors, which will be enclosed as part of the fire escape work. In these details, we can see that the top of the mesh netting will be anchored to a channel using steel cables and will come down at an angle to attach over the existing fire escapes. The rear facade of this building is visible through an existing parking lot on Division Street, indicated by the red arrow. And here we can see that visibility. Finally, these are photographs of the fire escape doors. And here are the cut sheets for the proposed Jacob metal mesh system, which has broad applications. And the applicant team is here to answer any additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think we'll go ahead and open the proceedings now, because I know we have some questions, and I imagine that we'll want the applicants to answer some of these. So Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
All moved.
All right. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we've opened it up so that the applicants can answer any questions. And we do have hands raised, so I'm going to start with Commissioner Gustafson, followed by Commissioner Bland.
I, I, my question is actually probably for, for Elizabeth. The, this mesh system, this is the first time in, I've ever encountered this in the, in these proceedings. And so, is it, is it required by code? I mean, why, why is, why is that there?
So this may be an app, a question for the applicant, but if I may respond with the information I have, adjacent to this building are low buildings, and they're worried about security of people jumping down onto the fire escapes from those adjacent low roofs, and that is why they are interested in enclosing them for security.
Okay, that, that's, that's enough. Thank you. I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland.
Well, my question is about the same thing, but I also wondered, I figured that was the answer, but I wanted to hear it. Also, the, just concerned a bit, but maybe I shouldn't be, about how the, that mesh is going to interfere with appreciation of the stained glass. That, that would be from the occupants on the inside, of course, really, so I guess it doesn't, it doesn't officially affect us, but I would assume that that's an important thing. The other question I have is about the, the light poles in the front. Are those to light the building? Or are they to light, you know, architecturally lighting, or is it more about security lighting at the pavement level?
This entire application is about secured, need, security hardening measures, so I would think that.
Yeah, okay.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yes, please do.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Misha Hunter Perketley, Salzman Architects. And just to make sure that we're clarifying for the record, the, an application was made to the DOT Revocable Consent Department, and they confirmed that no such revocable consent would be required because you can see in this elevation, the north elevation, that the location of the proposed security poles is actually outside of the extent of the property line, but within the line of the areaway fencing. And DOT confirmed that because the fencing was in place prior to 1940, that they would not be required to issue a revocable consent. So I just want to be very clear about that. I should say too, that the museum was identified by NYPD Counterterrorism Unit and federal law enforcement as being at high risk of terrorism activity and hate crimes. And the two security poles, Bega, of 5 inches diameter, 12 feet high, would be used for mounting two security cameras and lights that would be used to illuminate and survey the front facade of the museum directly. And also that the poles have been located in these two positions at the extreme north and extreme south points of the areaways as determined by the museum's security consultant. Finally, that the museum has received a number of federal and state grants to improve security from FEMA, DHS, and the New York Hate Crimes Unit. The, the poles have been selected to be a black finish, Bega, as the vendor, and to be as discreet as possible, but to allow for the mounting of the cameras and the lights. And the Jacob webnet has been used at zoos to, I guess, keep animals out, or keep animals in and keep visitors out. And Marie Ennis, who's the structural engineer for the project, had creatively thought about the possibility of applying the Jacob webnet to this application. And the steel rope is 2 millimeters thick. The apertures are 1 inch by 2 inches. And the, the idea is to be as anti-climb or climb-resistant as possible. As Elizabeth noted, there's very close proximities of neighboring buildings with potential for bad actors to jump onto the existing fire escapes. So these cage anti-climb enclosures are designed to be as light as possible and allow for- are designed to be as light as possible and allow for transmission of light through the, the windows and, and doors as, as much as possible, and to be, at the same time, hopefully a deterrent against future bad actors. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland, did you have a follow-up question to that? Oh, you're, you're muted. I'm mute.
Sorry, trying to lower my hand, I guess I didn't figure it out. My hand is going to lower.
Lowered it, so you probably, I had lowered it, so you probably put it back up.
Okay, sorry.
Any other questions? No, okay, so it seems we don't have any other questions right now, so why don't we turn to public testimony? And so if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you, and as always, we start with people who signed up in advance, and I will turn it over to our Executive Director, Lisa Kersavage, to walk us through the testimony. Lisa? Great, thanks, Sarah. We had one person sign up to speak, and that's George Calderaro, and George, I've brought you in.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm George Calderaro, Chair of the Preservation Committee of the New York Metro Chapter of the Victorian Society in America. Founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. We find the two proposed poles for lights and cameras at the front of the building to be brutal elements. Their stark form will be distracting and discordant feature that will be seen in the foreground of the ornate synagogue in most real-world views of the building. The hard-edged simplicity and service yard functionalism of these proposed posts does the visual damage when seen in front of the graceful and elaborately ornamental synagogue. The city's street light directly across from the building might accommodate security cameras and floodlights. If new poles on the site are the only option, then anything that softens their design, such as fluting or more felicitous housing for the cameras and lights, would help them recede visually in the context of the facade. At what seems to be a 10 or 11-foot proposed height, many options exist for such posts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, all right, and I'd like to turn back to Misha. Would you like to respond to the comments?
Sure. Can I also say that we did present to the Community Board, and their Landmarks Committee, you know, issued a unanimous vote of support, which was also voted on by the full Community Board, all in support. And, and I do appreciate the comments of the Victorian Society. I should say that we carefully looked at a number of poles, and the goal was to try to find something that really was as simple as possible, so as not to detract from this extraordinarily beautiful, iconic landmark of the Lower East Side and of Jewish history, and so not to compete, but instead to be as deferential as possible. The, the height was something to try to prevent potential bad actors from interfering with the camera or the light that are, that would be mounted on each post. The design, again, was, was purposely selected to be as simple as possible, a black finish to, again, try to not attract attention visually to itself, and we know that certainly a selection of a pole that was designed to be as, you know, to promote its longevity, to make sure that it's, you know, is, is not going to deteriorate over time. This Bega product and assembly with all of the mounts and hardware were considered very carefully together, and reviewed with the museum as well, so, and the security consultant. So if there's, you know, that's, that's at least all I can say at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and I just want to go back to Rich on our staff to see if we received any other written testimony. Rich?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, multiple buttons. We don't have any other written comments, but we do have a Community Board resolution.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any final questions for the applicant? Okay, then I think we'll move into our discussion, and Commissioner Bland, I know you've had some questions that have been answered, would you like to start this one?
Yes, I, I think this is fine, I think the-
Sarah, did you close the hearing?
Well, we opened the proceedings, so I don't think we need to close the proceedings, right? This is a public meeting item. Mark? I don't know, I don't hear you, Mark. Are we good, Mark?
I think Mark froze.
Mark's frozen. Okay. I think we're okay.
Right.
Go ahead.
I'm okay, too, as well, in terms of this application, I think it's appropriate. I think that the modern intervention that was described is minimalist and will not in any way distract from appreciating what is an extraordinary building. So I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Lutti?
I agree, I think it's very appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
I agree.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I also agree, it is appropriate, and I actually think that, that Jacob rope webnet system is actually very beautiful, too. It's not just a wire fence, it, it really has a, it's a beautiful thing, and it can be, and when it's, the few times that I've seen it described kind of a volume, it's, it's especially pretty, and, and of course, in this case, separate and distinct from the, the majesty of this building.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree, this is appropriate, it's a good solution.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree that it's appropriate, and it does not, it's necessary and does not detract from this landmark.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed, I think the, the poles being off the building is a much better solution than having the, the elements on the building. I think that they're, they're, I agree with what everyone was saying about the Jacob mesh material, we actually approved it at the commission for the Cambridge Bridge, the, the arch bridge that goes over the East River, as being the most invisible material available, and we have subsequently recommended it to other applicants because of its relative transparency, so I think it's a, it's a, it's the right material for this application, and I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Agree, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, great, so I think we have a consensus that all aspects of this application are appropriate, so I'll ask Commissioner Devonshire, would you actually read this motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
In the matter of LPC 21-02136, 1216 Eldred Street, the Eldred Street Synagogue, an individual landmark, and application to install light poles in the front Area Way, security cages at the rear fire escapes, I recommend approval, finding that the work will not damage any significant historic fabric. The poles fitted with the light fixtures and cameras are simply designed and will not call undue attention to themselves. The bluestone removed at the north and south Area Ways to accommodate subsurface electrical conduit will be salvaged and reinstalled. The placement of the proposed light poles will relate to the symmetrical design of the facade. The proposed fire escape cages will be visible only from an oblique angle through a parking lot on Division Street. The cages are relatively transparent, will be anchored at mortar joints, and are reversible, and the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the district or the landmark.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Sarah Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
You. Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Goldblum, you are mute?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 10 in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
So that's approved, thank you, and we'll move to the next public meeting item.
Next public meeting item is number four, LPC 21-03186, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Lot 1285, Lot 59, 18 to 20, East 50th Street, Hampton Shops Building, an individual landmark. A neo-Gothic-style commercial building designed by Rouse and Goldstone and Joseph L. Steinem, and built in 1915 to 16. The application is to replace windows, and again, this was read into the record last week on January 5th, 2021, but this will be presented for the first time today.
And Commissioners, note that staff will be presenting this, and applicants available for questions if needed.
And we'll open the proceedings after the presentation. The staff may begin.
You may unmute yourself and begin.
Morning, Commissioners, Richard Lowry, Preservation Staff. I will be presenting the application, and Thomas Feniman of Thomas Feniman Architecture will be here to answer any questions. The Hampton Courts, Hampton Shops Building is located on the southern side of East 50th Street, between 5th and Madison Avenues, opposite St. Patrick's Cathedral. The scope of work is to replace the windows between the 14th and the 11th floors. As you can see from the existing conditions photographs, all the original windows have been replaced prior to the designation of the individual landmark. And the proposed windows will match the historic 12 over 12 double-hung windows, and at the 11th floor will have the faux-arched upper sash heads to match the historic conditions. The proposal is to change of material from the historic wood windows, which is evidenced by the remainder of some of the original brick molds under the panning, from wood to aluminum. The proposed finish will match the terracotta cladding system. And here you can see the elevation of the windows with the regular 12 over 12 double-hungs and sections, and here for the arched head, upper sashes with a faux-arched upper stash. Thank you for your time, and Tom Feniman is here to answer any questions.
Now, you're muted.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll take a motion to open the proceedings in case we have questions, or if the applicant wants to add anything. So Commissioner Lutti, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
And Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the proceedings are open, and so first we'll start with any questions. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? On the scope or the details in the windows? All right, and why don't we move to testimony, and then I think after we hear the testimony, we may have more questions, and then we'll allow the applicant to add anything they'd like to add. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and I'll turn it over to Lisa, who will walk us through the testimony. Okay, we had two people sign up, let's start with Kelly Carroll, to be followed by George Calderaro. Kelly, I brought you in.
I'm here, it's just my, there we go, my computer was being a little slow. Good morning, Commissioners, Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. In full disclosure, the architect, Thomas Feniman, is a longtime member of HTC's board, and sometimes participant in our public review committee, although he did not present this project to us, nor was he present for our discussion of it. HTC largely supports this proposal, which will not, which will be of benefit to this handsome building, but has some questions and concerns about some of the details. To begin, while we understand the color is to match the light terracotta of the facade, we wonder if there is a more exact sense of what the color of the original windows were, so that it can be properly matched. We would also suggest that the muntens be present on the interior, as well as the exterior of the windows, to give them a greater veracity. Additionally, the topmost windows within the exterior arches should likewise have an arched inset on their top sections to carry their configuration through the unit, instead of awkwardly disappearing into the stone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and George, I've brought you in.
Hello again, George Calderaro, from the New York Metro Chapter of the Victorian Society in America. The proposed window replacement, as described in the drawings we reviewed, would be an improvement over the existing condition, but it doesn't reach the required level of appropriateness for an individual landmark. The commission should uphold its rule that the new windows match the historic wood material. There appears to be no design or historic preservation justification for not doing so. The color of the new sash and frame should be based on a paint analysis of the remaining historic framing members. Historic photographs show a light color. Also, the top rail of the arched windows should incorporate a panel that follows the arch of the frame, rather than allowing the glazing to disappear into the pocket above, as Kelly noted, I believe. The drawing we reviewed is ambiguous on its intent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, and Rich, did we receive any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board, five recommending approval.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to turn to Mr. Feniman to see if he'd like to address some of the comments that were raised in testimony, particularly the panel at the arch and the, the mutton details, and the color, and your choice for that color.
Sure. Dan, thank you for hearing us today. My name's Tom Feniman, I'm the architect for the owners on this project, and originally the owner's intent was to go with a bronze color window, which would have matched the storefront configuration that was approved by Landmarks, I believe, two years ago. We were not involved with that application, but in discussions with staff and looking at the historic photographs, and it was really apparent that the better approach was to go with a lighter color, more in keeping with the tone of the terracotta. We have not done a color analysis, we have not been able to get close enough for, find a piece appropriate, has enough material on it to actually analyze, but we certainly could approach that further as we get onto the building. The top windows, I should add, we're putting a false arch in front of a double-hung window, which is an approach that we've done with other similar type configurations, where the rectangular shape of the double-hung sash is in a recessed pocket, which is existing, we believe it exists there, this is a typical detail on how these windows were constructed to begin with. So it would be a rectangular shape behind the terracotta arch, but the window, as it presents to the street, would follow that arch line with a false piece to replicate that arch on the window. I should add, this is a commercial building that is primarily unoccupied in a lot of these spaces, and this is, we're, we're doing a restoration project on the whole facade, which was approved by staff, and this window replacement project is really taking advantage of the time that we have that scaffolding in place, so we can do this at the same time.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any other questions? Okay, so I think we're going to then move to our discussion, and, um, you know, this is, um, here before us today because of the change in material. The rule that was referenced in testimony is the rule that enables the staff to issue a permit. So, um, we're looking at that change in material, and the proposal otherwise, um, seeks to reflect the historic, um, configuration, including the panel in the arch, which the applicant has responded to, which is typical of how, uh, the wood window would have been fabricated as well, and, uh, a condition, a treatment that we have approved elsewhere on arched aluminum windows. Um, and the color is, uh, approximated based on the historic photographs and what we know about buildings of this age and style. So, um, why don't we start our discussion, Commissioner? Devonshire, would you like to start this one?
Sure, um, I'm in favor of, uh, everything that's been applied for here, but I do believe that at a minimum, we should have a finishes analysis done. This is an individual landmark, and it's certainly deserving of, of a not extraordinary bit of forensic research in order to, uh, come up with an appropriate color, not just looking at photographs.
Commissioner Chen.
I agree with Commissioner, uh, Davisha.
Okay, Commissioner Bland.
I agree as well.
Commissioner Lutfi.
I agree as well, but I, I also think the, um, the comment about making sure that there are interior muntens is a good one, and, uh, I would recommend that too.
Commissioner, uh, Jefferson.
I agree.
Commissioner Gustafson.
I, I, I agree with Commissioner Devonshire.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I do as well.
Okay, and, and that's, uh, the, to approve it with the paint analysis, contingent upon a paint analysis.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Okay, and Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree that a paint analysis should be done. Um, and I also agree with Commissioner Lutfi that the interior, uh, muntan bar will help give more depth to the expression of the muntens.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin.
Uh, I agree with Commissioner Devonshire.
Okay, and Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree, and I agree with, uh, Jean's thought on the mullion.
Okay. All right, great, so I think what, we have, um, enough to approve it as proposed, uh, contingent upon a paint analysis to determine the original color, but we can also encourage them to, um, explore the interior muntens that other Commissioners have mentioned. So, um, I think I'll go ahead and make this motion, since, Michael, you did the last one. So, here we go. In the matter of docket number LPC 21-03186, 18 to 20, East 50th Street, the Hampton Shops Building, an individual landmark, um, a neo-Gothic, perpendicular Gothic-style commercial building designed by Rousen, Rousen, Goldstone, and Joseph L. Steinem, and built in 1915 to 1916. This is an application to replace windows. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features, that the proposed windows will match the configuration, operation, and details of the historic windows, that the, um, proposed finish of the aluminum windows will be similar in appearance to the historic wood windows, that, um, buildings of this age and style were often designed with metal or metal-clad windows, and therefore, the use of metal is appropriate on this building type, and that when, uh, the windows to be replaced are located high above street level, therefore, the difference in material will not be readily discernible, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark. However, I find that, I recommend that the, uh, or, or, the applicant do a paint analysis, and in consultation with staff, determine the appropriate color based on the results of that paint analysis. And, um, with, and then, uh, further encourage them to consider windows with interior muntens. Okay, Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
I would second that.
Okay, thank you, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and not opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, that's approved with that modification, thank you, and we'll move to the next item, which is the first item on our hearing agenda.
Yes, so that's item number one, LPC 20-10140, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 387, lot 4, 163 Bond Street, in the Borum Hill Historic District Extension, in a, an Anglo-Italianate-style rowhouse built in 1870. The application is to construct rear yard and rooftop additions.
And Commissioners, the applicant has joined the hearing. Now, control of presentation, please remember to unmute yourself. Um, state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Um, for the record, my name is Sarah Jacoby, Chair Carroll and Honorable Commissioners. It is my pleasure to be able to present our proposal to you for the rear yard and rear rooftop addition at 163 Bond Street in Borum Hill, Brooklyn. Before we look at the proposed scope, I want to give a very brief background. First off, our firm works extensively in Brownstone, Brooklyn. I live in Brooklyn. The owners have lived in Borum Hill on an off since 2004, and moved into this home in 2010. So they love the neighborhood and are committed to being there. In the last 10 years, as their lives changed, and they had children, they began exploring the idea of renovating to make the house work better for their family and now school-aged children. 163 Bond Street is located on the short side of the block, in Area 2 of the Borum Hill District Designation Extension, excuse me, which was designated June 2018. The designation report, this is a paraphrase, is that the neighborhood is residential in character, notable as a place with a cohesive architectural language, where working families lived in modestly aspirational homes. I believe many of the current Commissioners were involved in that designation, so I imagine are familiar with this, and you see many things. Um, and we are here now to propose, in addition to a home, to continue to make Borum Hill a place for families to live. As I said, it's the center rowhouse of a row of three Anglo-Italianate-style residences that were constructed in 1870. While the southwest rowhouse was extensively renovated in 2012, resurfaced, lintels removed, stoop lowered, all three buildings retain their cornices and overall height from the Bond Street view, giving a strong horizontal reading in the center of the short side of the block. One of our constraints is that the existing footprint is relatively modest. The width of the lot is just 16 foot 8, and the building is 36 feet long. Of course, the interior dimensions are narrower yet, yielding less than 1,800 square feet of usable floor area. The challenge was how to find the space needed for the family. We realized that there would be, we realized that, ooh, I'm going the wrong way, but whatever. Um, we realized that there would be some visibility of our proposal, and we'd have to find a way for that visibility to be sensitive and cohesive, to not interrupt that strong datum that we see in the historical photo, um, and to be harmonious within the context of that row, the more varied streetscape, which has been there for a while, and the historic district. Given the request of the family, separate bedrooms from children, et cetera, the project evolved to have three main components. Upgrade and restore the facade, add relatively invisible space in the form of rear addition, and propose a visible rooftop addition. The goal is that the rooftop addition is visually distinct, without detracting from the primary reading of the facades of the three rowhouses, and in the context of the built variety of the block, feels cohesive and harmonious. Beginning with the front facade work, we plan to restore the existing historic elements by proposing new painted windows throughout, and returning the second floor windows to the original arch, as you can see in the 1940 tax photo. The existing historically appropriate front doors and original lintels will be maintained, and the cornice will be restored and repaired. And just to locate ourselves, here we are on the short side of that block. In this photo, we can see how diverse that block is, that there's, um, though almost exclusively brick and relatively simple, there, the row is only of three, and there's a lot of sectional and elevational change throughout. Originally, there was two corner stores, a stable, which is now a garage, and in quite a short strip, a lot of residential typologies. And across the street, there's also a fair amount of diversity. As we look at the full block, we see that both Wyckoff and Bergen have the more archetypical long rows, that horizontal datum that continues. But again, in this context, you can see that where we are, there's a lot more diversity, and doesn't have that strong reading, short, strong reading, but not as long. You can also see here where we're going to see incidental view on Wyckoff to the back. Um, and again, a lot of variety there as well, in our corner. So looking at the back, that interior of the lot, here we are on the roof of our project at 163. You can see this large addition that was pre-designation at 165 Bond, that comes out quite a bit. You can see this large condo building that was completed in 2017, and another addition with a bulkhead on the interior. And just looking back at our building, you see that that row is no longer legible from the interior due to this larger addition. Um, and while we're looking at it, let me see it a little better in here. This addition does come out 21 feet past the original footprint. Um, and as we looked at our scope, it was important for us, both for privacy and sensitivity to the block, to come out not that far. We're coming out 12 feet, and then we'll have a deck that will be nine feet, still leading us a foot short of this addition. We are going taller, um, which is worth noting that this building redid the entire interior and redid the floor levels, and, um, you know, we like the building and we like the inside as well. So keeping the stairs and some of that interior is important to us. So it wasn't necessarily an option for us to gut the interior and change in that exact fashion. Um, and again, we see, what we'll keep referring to, that you do really get this cornice reading, but there is a lot of variety here. And that's reinforced in our drawings as well. These buildings are different heights, we do have this strong row. Um, our addition, you know, is substantive. As you know, the elevation drawings exaggerate that. You'll see that it's set back, and we don't think it will have this reading, um, from the streetscape. And the same on the back, you know, we are coming taller. It's not a full floor above this one, that only goes up half a foot, but it is, you know, it does go up. And we'll move through these a little quickly, as we want to look to the mock-up, but these are looking at those elevations, um, and the brick, both the front and back. And here's the brick, which will have a corner detail. We can return to those if necessary. Here's the existing section, but I think the proposed section is what's going to be helpful. So we've pulled back, um, 11 and a half feet from the front facade. The cornice projection is further yet, so it's more than that. Um, we tried to keep this as compact as possible, and lowered that roof level from the lowest point to keep the massing as compact as possible. The code requirement was to add a bulkhead, which we sloped, and again, pushed back to really minimize visibility, but it is visible, as you'll see, but our intent here is to keep this cornice line as the primary reading from the street, that that's what's important, to see that legible, short row. These are just views of the side materials that won't be visible, but here we get to the visibility lines. Without an addition, there's nothing to see. Um, but in fact, with our addition, you will see that front wall of our rooftop addition. Again, pulled back, the cornice, we think, will be the primary reading. Here we are on that roof, so you can see the adjacent building, um, that does slope, but has a very different configuration. Here's the mock-up, that's the bulkhead, and in all these drawings, we'll be using the red line to show the mass. The blue is the railing beyond, so it will be a bit more porous than real life, if we get there. Um, so this is, you know, the most visible moment, so the red line will be that front wall. The blue is the railing beyond. Um, and our intent is that, because it's set back, and we do really read this cornice as the primary reading. That said, it is a visible addition, which means for us that it has to be architecturally purposeful and aesthetically considered. Our proposition is that the addition be brick, as we wanted to work within the existing palette of the building and neighborhood, rather than introduce something new. Um, we also think then the brick will be in dialogue with the block, with the district, um, in echo, rather than a contrast. Another reason for staying with the brick is somewhat emotional. As I said, the owners have been there 10 years, lived in the neighborhood longer. They love the home, the neighborhood, and brick really, it, it is a neighborhood of brick townhouses, so that felt like the direction that was important to us, and felt more true to the context. Um, that said, we'll detail it, being aware that we're building it in 2021, hopefully, rather than 150 years ago, so that it can be distinct, but again, in dialogue, and the material connecting that old and new. Um, and I think of the options considered, another thing about the brick is that it, it feels like the right choice in that it's accessible. Part of what this neighborhood is, that it is modest, and brick is an easy-to-use economical choice that feels to us connected and appropriate with this type of neighborhood. Um, and again, you do see that cornice line, which we think will dominate, but you do see it. Maybe worth noting is, there's a lot of tree cover for a lot of the year, so you won't see it all the time, but there, there is winter in New York, so you will see it some of the time. Um, and here, we see it from Bergen Street. Um, or, so these are sort of the most prominent views, shall we say. This is a view from Wyckoff, where we see through that lot. This is that 2012 addition that, um, is large. And here we can see our bulkhead popping up, which, you know, we think that in this extremely varied roofscape, it's not going to be prominent or legible as anything at all, um, for better, for worse. Um, and again, you can see there is a lot of variety here as well, less historical than the front, but it, it's a place where a lot of architectural language is. Um, and then we'll click through a walk, coming along Bond from Wyckoff as the addition comes into view. One thing is that these corner buildings, it's a similar experience coming from Bergen. These corner buildings really bracket and mask it until you get onto Bond itself. Um, and you do see this brief horizontal datum, but you can see it coming into view here. Um, and so, yeah, so it's, it is in view for a fairly narrow window of time, but it is, it is there. We, we do think it will receive subtly integrating into the context of these brick volumes, that it'll feel coherent and respectful without detracting from that visual integrity of the row. Um, and what we see here is that, that, um, the architectural diversity on this block shows that it's a place that's reflected the needs of the community and the different needs of these lots. And as those needs change over the course of time, in this case, 150 years, we want to sensitively update this home, so it works for a family to stay a part of that residential, social, architectural community in Borum Hill. And for me, what's sort of magical about a neighborhood like Borum Hill is that it does evolve without losing its historical character, that there's new buildings there all over, but it really comes through in that it has a real sense of place, and that the buildings can be gracefully altered, and that comes through without, that they can handle the changes that, um, happen with time. Um, and that is it, so thank you for your time. I'm grateful to the Commission for your attention, and eager to find a solution that, um, is harmonious and works for you.
Okay, thank you, and we do have some questions. Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
Forgive me if I missed this, but was the addition next door approved by the Commission?
No, it was, the, I don't want to go back, no, that was in 2012. It was just designated in 2018, so, um, all of those projects are pre-designation.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, don't see any other questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance, as always. And I'll turn it over to Lisa to walk us through that testimony.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with Joyce Calo. Okay, Joyce, I've brought you in as a panelist. And you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
You'd?
And if you choose, you can turn on your camera.
Can you see me now?
Yeah, so we can see and hear you. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Joyce Calo, and thank you for letting me speak at this hearing today. Just a little bit about me, I have, well, my wife and I have lived in Brooklyn for over 25 years. And we first lived in Cobble Hill, and then we looked for a long time and we purchased a similar house just around the corner at 204 Bergen Street. And so I'm very intimately aware of what's been going on in our neighborhood and am someone who has been very much a staunch person who wants landmarks to preserve things. For example, when our sidewalk broke, we wanted to put bluestone down even though we didn't have to. Or when we renovated our house, we found in the walls these old cards by a cloakmaker from the 1800s. So we're very aware of what's going on in the neighborhood. But I just wanted to come out in support of what I think is going to be happening with this home. I know the people. I know the neighborhood very well. I have a dog. I walk there, you know, all the time, five times a day. And given the presentation, I don't feel like anything that I saw is going to drastically change what's already on that block. I think, as was presented by the architect, that's an erratic block already. I think the three brownstones that sit there now, or I should say red bricks, have that beautiful cornice. And I think the way that they've designed their extension to be set back is tastefully done and fits, for me, within what the community is trying to achieve. I mean, it's a community of growth and people need space. And especially now with COVID, everyone's working from home and things are kind of crazy. And I think they found a way to do, to make their extension and their additions fit in line with what I love the most about Borum Hill, the historic nature of it, the materials, the brick, the sizing, the look from the street and things like that. And that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, we have Kelly Carroll. And Kelly, I brought you in.
Okay. Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. "The rooftop addition and stair bulkhead are far too large for this row of modest Italian eight houses. The successful design of the rooftop next door should be examined to achieve its level of minimal visibility. Much of the bulk and visibility is being driven by the proposed stair bulkhead clunkily looming over this tranquil street. The proposed design of the rear facade does not leave any relationship to the historic configuration intact. While the neighbors have dramatically changed their facades, this work was completed prior to designation. The LPC's direction regarding rear rowhouse treatment in this relatively new historic district today will establish the appropriate standards for applicants moving forward. With precedent at the fore of this application, HTC requests that the top windows remain intact." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Heather and William.
Hi.
Hi. We can hear you. Please just state your name for the record.
Sure, I'm William Memento. This is Heather Corbett. So we are homeowners at 163 Bond. As Sarah said, I've lived in the neighborhood off and on since 2004. We love Borum Hill, and that's why we chose to live here. I was at the Landmarks Commission's meetings as they went through the process of adding these blocks to the historic district. And, you know, and heard all of the, the sort of ins and outs and the benefit of it. And we're very happy that we're a part of this neighborhood. It's lovely. We've always really enjoyed the character of it. As Sarah mentioned, once we started to have children, our house became a bit cramped. And now everyone's sort of living under the same roof as all day. It's gotten, it's gotten quite difficult. But we, we, we just want to sort of convey how much we want to maintain the character of the neighborhood and how much we sort of appreciate the look and feel of everything. We've kind of, throughout the years, as maintenance has come up, maintained the windows and we just sort of spent a considerable amount of money to maintain the front door as it was originally put in the building. It's a great antique door. And so I just wanted to say how much we're kind of into the idea of maintaining the character of the neighborhood. We do feel that we're not being so invasive, particularly with regards to the rear facade. And we're, you know, electing brick. It's also largely invisible to, from just about every vantage point. And, you know, and I sort of recall at the initial hearings for the community board, when we were deciding whether or not we were going to, whether the community wanted to be a part of the Landmarks District, there was sort of a lot of allusions and statements made to the effect that these sorts of developments, I had sort of raised this question then, like, would we be able to expand once we had children? And we were told that this would be, you know, a pretty seamless process. And I just wanted to kind of express my desire to continue to live in this neighborhood in this, you know, in this way with our family and maintain the character. Thank you very much for listening to us.
Okay, thank you. Next, George Calderaro. And George, I've brought you in.
George Calderaro from the New York chapter of the Victorian Society. "The proposed rooftop addition is far too massive for this small house. It will be highly visible and disruptive to the streetscape and of the appreciation of the design of this group of three houses. It has no logical design relationship to either the front or back of the historic building to which it would be attached. It would completely obliterate the historic character of the entire rear of the facade of the house, visible from within the block. We recommend denial." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Lauren Calo. And Lauren, I've promoted you. And you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera, if you need. And please just state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Sure, this is Lorraine Calo. I am Joyce Calo's wife, and I am calling in to express my support for this construction and for Bill and Heather to be able to expand their house. I think what's really important to me is that families that live in the neighborhood have an opportunity to design and build and expand their house as needed for their growing families. And that's critical. We've seen a lot of sort of speculators come into the neighborhood to take advantage of the large kind of green zone and open zone in our backyards and building back and going up and turning these properties into more commercial developments. And we would like to keep the sort of single-family brownstone neighborhood feel, which I think what the Landmarks is trying to do. I've had an opportunity to look at the plans, and I feel that what they are doing is appropriate. Bill and Heather have conscientiously hired both a Brooklyn architect and a Brooklyn contractor that has done work in the neighborhood, that understands the characteristics of the neighborhood and what is appropriate to build in that area. And because of that, we support this and we really want to have families like Bill and Heather continue to come to our neighborhood and to make it their home.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
All right, thank you. Rich, do we have any written testimony?
Yes, we have one additional letter in support of the application and a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board to recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if she would like to address some of the comments that we've heard. We did hear from some supportive neighbors. We also heard from the applicant, the owners of this particular property that is before us today. And then we heard from some groups. So would you like to respond to some of the concerns that were raised?
Yeah, I guess briefly, the bulkhead's really never going to be visible, so that's not, that shouldn't be a concern. It's a code required, but there's nowhere you'll see it. You do see the addition. But again, we do believe that it's not detracting from the feel of the street that is, as one of the testimonies said, is an eclectic block and that we still will be able to see these buildings.
Okay, all right. And Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, so I am starting to unmute or request to unmute you all so that we can close the hearing and move to our discussion. So just look at your screens. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, let's all vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And this, this has been presented, is an application for a visible rooftop addition and a full-height rear yard addition, and the two additions connect at the rear. And so we can have a discussion about visibility as well as scale and relationship to the volumes of the historic building. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. First, I want to thank the applicant and the owners for a very thoughtful and careful presentation. I also wanted to say that I appreciate your participation in the creation of the district extension or the district and kind of your participation in this process from that point to this one. So I'm going to point out some things that in my understanding of our typical experience would factor into an evaluation of any addition of any brownstone or any townhouse in the city that's covered by landmarks. And it's focused correctly on visibility issues, but our purview is not only on what is visible from the street, but there are other considerations as well. Part of it is about considering the integrity of the structure that is protected by the designation. And what that translates into for us is that, in most cases, we try to preserve the volume of the historic building and prevent the project from becoming an old facade in front of a new structure. To that end, one of the, one of the people who commented noted that we almost always request that the top floor of the existing rear wall be retained, that the volume of the building can be read through whatever additions are made. Similarly, the additions to the roof in the rear, you know, so what that practically means is that your addition would have to come down by one floor, by two floors at the back. You would have, you'd be able to do a two-story addition at the rear yard, but leave it to the basement and first floor, but leave the, leave the top floor, the second floor, visible and in its historic configuration and with its historic material. If there's an addition on the roof, what we usually request is that it be slightly set back, three to five feet from the back wall, so that the, again, so that that volume can be retained and read, so that it looks like an historic building with additions and not like a new building. Unfortunately, the building to the left is something that preceded our processes and would not probably have been approved as it was built. Because it breaks the row, I think that it does permit your two-story addition, if you choose to make it in the back, to be, you know, as deep to align with it. I personally would approve a two-story addition that aligned with the addition to the left. And in terms of the rooftop addition, we try very hard to have two-story, you know, to have the front view from the street unaffected, if possible. And it looks like, based on the visibility studies that you provided, if you were to either set the front back a little bit further or slope it or in some way design it so that it was less visible, perhaps lower it, if the ceiling height was a little lower, all of those in combination could result in a front facade that was less visible. When we do front facades that are visible, rooftop additions that are visible over the front of the building, they generally have a closer design relationship or design interaction to the building below it. And this configuration, as shown, probably doesn't up to that level, in my opinion. Though I would suggest that you lower it and/or slope it and try to get it to be less, not visible over the, or at least have the mass of it, not including the railing, to be not visible from the views where you showed it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I wouldn't add anything to Commissioner Goldblum's comments. I think they're spot on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree. You know, the points were well taken, and then it's in context with our practice. It should be re-studied in terms of lowering it and the scale as well.
Okay. And Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I don't think this could be approved as it's drawn now. It's likely, in my judgment, maybe that this house just can't take an addition that's going to work for this family. I'm sorry if that's true, because the testimony of the neighbors and so forth wanting the family to stay in the neighborhood is persuasive, but I don't think that's our immediate purview. So I think this just kind of overwhelms the house and is inappropriate, at least as it is now. I also think if they are going to work on it and reduce its massing in some ways, even though there was, the architect certainly made a case for brick, I think that's the wrong material on the, of a rooftop addition like this, and it should be some sort of a metal that would not call so much attention to itself. But anyway, I think it has to be fairly significantly reworked to be appropriate, in my judgment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutze?
I am very sympathetic to, again, to the desires of the homeowners who clearly love their home and love their neighborhood. Borum Hill is amazingly consistent in such a fantastic way. I realize, you know, the neighbor was able to do something different because the neighborhood hadn't yet been landmarked. But in general, it's a pretty consistent neighborhood and just wonderful to be in. I could approve this if they could reduce the visibility somewhat. And I don't think... And I don't think, um, having a little bit of visibility would be problematic. I, I do buy into the idea that uh, if it's set back enough and reduced just a little more, that, you know, the, the cornice holds and that's, and your perception of the building, you know, is there. So I would recommend that they do a little more work on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
The three buildings are so delicate that it seems to me if you're going to put an addition to that, you really have to move it back quite a bit. And I'm not sure that the degree of, of visibility would be, have to be quite limited because these buildings, these three buildings are so delicate that that cornice line across, going across is really quite lovely. So I think they would need some luck on this.
Are you muted?
Sorry, Commissioner Gustafson?
Um, I, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum's articulate comments.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I agree with the other commissioners. Uh, there just seems to be too much on this addition.
Okay, Commissioner Hallford Smith?
I agree with the previous comments that this, the additions here seem to overwhelm this small building.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yes, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum's comments and also Commissioner Bland's about the material for the, uh, top addition. And I think that the top, the top addition needs to be, um, lowered, pulled back, slanted, whatever we can do to, uh, minimize the visibility and, and also have it be of a different material. And in the back, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum's comments about lowering it and preserving the top floor with the proviso that we usually do allow one of the windows to be extended to a door on the top floor. And it's important because while the row is not there, it does have a paired building which looks, you know, they both look, they look exactly the same really at the moment. So I think that's kind of important. And that the top floor needs to be preserved.
Okay. All right, thank you all. So we won't take an action today. I think that the direction is pretty clear that the rooftop addition needs to be reduced in its visibility. Um, the material should be restudied. And I think the rooftop addition, you'll want to not only think about the front in terms of its visibility, but also pulling it back from the rear so that, um, we can preserve the top floor of the rear facade. And then, um, there could be a lower addition. Um, and I think there's been some indication that it could come out even deeper if that helps. So because there are, you know, um, still decisions that could be made about the depth of that rear addition or the whatever the resulting visibility is of the modifications to the rooftop addition, we won't take an action and we'll see this back again when you're ready. So we, um, will conclude this item now and, um, we're going to break for lunch. At this point, we are behind schedule. So we'll take a, a 30-minute recess and we'll come back, um, with item number two, public hearing item number two. And, um, and then we will begin our afternoon session and we will likely have to read some items into the record as well and do them next week because we are behind schedule. But we'll, we'll wait a little bit and see how many we can get through. Okay, so Commissioners, just turn your camera and your audio off and we'll see you in 30 minutes. All other members of the public, please exit the meeting now so that we can let you back in at 1:15. All right, thank you.